Okay, this is the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, October 13th. And with all the rigmarole pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and his March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Information and guidelines can be found on the AG webpage. The town will persevere to use conference call capabilities regularly for other parties to listen in and participate accordingly. If not possible, we will post on the town's website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, get to the right page here. First thing we're going to do is we're going to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone could please rise. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, we're open for public comments. If anybody has any comments that they'd like to direct to the Board of Selectmen, if you could go right ahead and state your name and address and fire away. First order of business, this is a joint meeting with the Water Commissioners, just so everybody's aware. Our first thing is a continuation of the tax classification hearing for fiscal year 21, continued from 9:29 and 10:06, and we're going to continue that. It's continued until today. Carl, are we ready to move on this, or are we going to continue it again?
He's muted, Doug.
Carl, you're muted.
The Board of Assessors have not heard back from the Department of Revenue regard to this one particular issue on those utilities. So it's for the same purpose as the other continuances were. So Chairman Conley and Sue Gore are recommending we do another continuance.
Okay, so we would continue this till the 20th?
Right, and of course, now that we know Fred Dupre may be weighing in with a longer meeting, whether that's on the 20th or the 27th, the Board will just have to determine once, you know, whether it wants to do it at 5:30, or 5:45, or 6 o'clock. What is your preference, gentlemen?
I would say, my opinion would be 5:45, then we can get through our meeting and be almost done, and then transition to the other thing if we're done in time. Any objection, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a payroll warrant, number 2108, dated today. Cindy, do you have the amount?
239, 790.55.
Okay, and we have open session minutes one for 10:06 and the entire open session from 10:06. I need a motion for both of those, please.
Joe Didi will make the motion for both.
Russ Fox will second.
Thank you. It's a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Great. How are we doing on time? Perfect. So this is...
We have an executive session, seven minutes.
That was for 10:06, right?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion for those as amended?
Yeah, with one word change from in the last sentence before the votes were taken. New Police Chief, not no...
Joe Didi will make the motion as amended.
Russ Fox will second.
Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay, so that's the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have a joint appointment to review and interview candidates to fill a vacancy. I believe, why don't we first have the point of order here is that we have more than one applicant in the meeting at this time. So how do, I want to introduce the Water Commissioners and the DPW Director, and then we'll figure out how we're going to handle that. So Randy?
Yes, sir, how you doing, Doug?
Hey, Randy, how are you?
Randy Brown, DPW Director.
I somehow named you Russ Fox. Look how I did that. I'll fix that.
Russ is Russ Fox.
I could see how that could happen.
Well, they are like brothers.
So much, so much I could say.
Russ, Jesus Christ. Randy, would you please introduce your Water Commissioners to everyone here?
Sure, so we actually only have one member on the meeting tonight. Dave Meswore, he was on the call. Ed Johnson is not able to make it tonight. He said he wanted me to pass a message along. He just said due to personal reasons, he did not feel comfortable being a part of this conversation today. So he's going to leave it up to the Select Board and the remaining Water Commissioner to make this decision.
Carl?
Yes.
Is that okay? Because it's a board of three with only two members, and you have one here. It's okay to proceed?
They've been, I believe, the Water Commission is new of this appointment when it was arranged and posted last week. Is that correct, Randy?
Yes, yes, they are aware. Like I said, I passed along the message from Ed, so they are fully aware of this meeting tonight.
Right, but they were given advance notice of the meeting?
Yes, they were, yes.
Oh, yeah. All right, so... I was more concerned for a quorum of their board. We have a quorum of our board, and we probably have a quorum of both boards if you add the math, but just wanted to make sure that you're the expert on this, Carl.
Yeah, I can't imagine that would be an issue because it's the remaining members that have been notified to be in attendance.
Okay, so we have, so how do we want to do this? Let me see. Give me one second. Now, we've gone through the process, this is simple, on how to fill a vacancy. I just wanted to get to the...
Well, I believe, wouldn't you do the waiting room approach, Doug?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. So I'm going to, Mr. Kane?
Feria would be first.
Huh?
According to the amended agenda, Cindy has listed Joel Feria first, so Mr. LaBambard, Mr. Kane would go in the waiting room, according to their times, because Joel is listed at 6:25, Butch at 6:30, and John at 6:35 under this amended agenda that Cindy did.
Perfect. So Mr. Kane and Mr. LaBambard, I'm going to put you in the waiting room, and we'll bring you back in when it is your appointed time.
I will. Waiting.
Oops.
Can I go in the waiting room?
No, you can't go in the waiting room.
Sounds like the place to be.
All right. It probably is. I don't think they can chat with each other in the waiting room. I think they just get a blank screen. It'll be kind of funny if they could.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, so here we are to, back to where we were. Mr. Feria, how are you?
I'm doing well, yourself?
I'm good. So I guess it's really the pleasure of Mr. Meswore, how you would like to, do you have any questions for the candidates? And then we'll go to this board as well, to see if there's any candidates, and then we'll get a statement from the candidates themselves.
I think David said no.
He's muted.
I just unmuted myself. I thought you had me muted.
No, sir.
Pointing at it.
I usually get a different finger.
I usually give a different finger. All right, I looked over the candidates' letters and Mr. Feria's resume. I only have, my only real question is, I know that you're related to a DPW supervisor, I just want to clarify that. I don't think it's a conflict of interest. I don't believe that there would be any conflict of interest, but I just want to know if you're aware of the, like, the open meeting laws and not being able to talk about things in front of the Board. I don't want to get in any trouble, and I don't want you to get in any trouble, seeing as you're going to be earning eight cents an hour, you'll be on the public paywall. And you could be faced with fines that could take a long time to pay, and eight cents an hour.
I would, I would be something I would definitely want to review. I don't see any conflict, you know, whatsoever happening, and I can absolutely respect the law.
Yeah, I don't see a conflict. My big concern is with, you know, a lot of times that you get a little too familiar, and you're talking with, you're talking with people and things that come up in front of the Commission, you know, maybe, maybe discussed, and if you get into a position where you can discuss it with more than one person, it could be viewed as a violation of the open meeting law. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that you understood that, and whether or not you're still interested.
Well, I would definitely be interested. Like I said, definitely would be good for me to review the, you know, the open meeting law and understand it a little bit more clearly, so I don't make that mistake.
Yeah. Okay, I like your, I like your experience. I think it's, it'd be very helpful on the Board, on the Commission, I'm sorry. I get the two confused. So I really, like I said, I understand the, understand your experience, and I think it would be a big, a big help. Another thing is, you're only being appointed until next May. Do you think you, do you foresee not wanting to continue after May, or would you be interested in running again as an elected official?
Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
Okay. Those are really my only two questions with, are you going to be, you know, are you a little more long-term than four months, five months? And would you be, you know, would you review the, review the laws and make sure that you keep yourself out of trouble?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from the Board of Selectmen?
Only question I really have is, do you have time for this? No, seriously. Unfortunately, the Water Department, and no disrespect, David, you guys had a real turbulent years over the years, which is trying to get enough guys to get to the meetings, for whatever reason, so I just don't need any bullshit. You know, you really got to make meetings. It's that, that simple. You know, you're from a DPW, you get it. Meeting doesn't happen, nothing happens.
Oh, that's correct. I mean, you know, from my understanding, is it, do we meet once a month? Can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, I can respond to that. Typically, they meet once, once a month. It's been less frequent over the past, this past year, primarily due to COVID-19, but they typically meet once a month.
Which doesn't sound like much, but for some reason, that date, you know, seems to be a problem. And it's no, you know, guys, we all have our issues, we get it. But that's, that's my only concern. A hell of a resume. Yeah, I mean, you're overqualified. I just want you to actually be able to make it.
If I could make the meetings, I don't see a problem. I wouldn't have put in my letter of interest if I didn't think I could make it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Russell?
Yeah, I'm all set. I'm familiar with all three candidates. I know Joel from the Rec Center, so, no, I'm comfortable.
Randy?
I'm good.
Great. Joel, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time. You know, it'd be nice to get involved in the town a little bit more, as I've obviously done in the past, growing up with the sports and everything else. So it'd be interesting to move in a different direction in, you know, into the government aspect of everything.
You're going to, you would live to regret those words, I assure you.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize that you actually used to, I think we talked about this, I think I met you once before, correct? And I think you used to work at Wally Computer a long time ago, before I was there.
Yeah, back in 90, oh, 95 to 97, I think it was.
Just missed you. I got there in 98. Well, great. So we will, I believe we're going to vote on this tonight, so you're welcome to stick around. I don't think we have to send someone to the waiting room after they've already interviewed, correct? So you're welcome to hang out, and I'm going to bring in the next, the next applicant, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, let me just find my paper.
Even LaBambard?
Okay.
Just let him in.
You're turning into a Zoom pro. David, how are you?
I'm good, sir. How are you tonight?
I'm great, because we're nearing the end of our meeting. Why don't we go, are you familiar with what is the requirements for the Water Commissioner?
I didn't know there was any requirements, but go ahead and fill me in.
No, no, as far as what the job entails.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes.
Yeah, I don't think we put in any new requirements in the last couple of weeks. So I'll do the same thing again as we did in the last, is ask Mr. Meswore if he has any questions of this applicant.
I just, I just have a question. I'm sorry, it just jumped out of my head. Can you, can you come back to me? I was thinking of a question, and as soon as you asked me, I forgot it.
No worries.
So, David, how are you? So I thought they meant more than once a month, but apparently it only be once a month. No problem with your scheduling to make that once a month meeting?
I'm available 24/7. If anything comes up during the day, if something's needed, I'm here.
My standard question.
Russell?
I'm going to repeat myself. I know all three candidates, I'm very familiar with Butch, I know that he worked at the DPW for many years, is a dispatcher now, and also involved with him in South of Grange, so just like the other candidate, I'm familiar with all three of them, Mr. Chairman.
Randy?
No questions for me, sir.
David, did I give you enough time to remember the question you were going to ask?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about his background. You were on the DPW for 19 years?
For 19.
Were you involved with the Water Department, or were you highway, or?
I was highway, but we worked hand in hand with the Water Department. We helped them on water breaks and, you know, anything else they needed help with. So I'm very familiar with how they operate and what goes on.
Yeah, okay. Do you have any, do you have any problems with anybody that works there now?
Nope, I know all the guys very well. I mean, there's a couple new guys since I've been gone, but I get along with everybody down there.
Okay. Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think the other question David asked was, if this is only for so many months, and then you'd have to run for that position down the road?
Correct, yes, I knew that.
Okay. And David, did you explain to them the rate of pay?
Yes, it's eight cents an hour.
I didn't even think that.
Before taxes.
Oh.
David, do you have anything that you'd like to add, or add to this discussion?
I just want to say that this is my third attempt to get on the Board of Water Commissioners. My first time, I ran as a write-in candidate, that's when Mr. Johnson got on, and I lost by, I think it was less than 200 votes. And then my second attempt was when Pete Jacobowski passed away, and at that time, I was kind of glad that I didn't get it, because they gave it to Pete's son-in-law, which I thought was the right thing to do out of respect for Pete's family and Peter.
Thank you.
Great.
I have no further questions.
Anyone else? Okay, we can bring in the third applicant, please.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you. You never know where they're going to pop up. There he is. Mr. Kane, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Very good. So we'll, we'll go through the same process that we went through with the other two, and see here. So first, I ask the Water Commissioner if he had any questions for you. David?
Yes, in your letter, you say you run a, you run a company that does utility construction?
Yes, I do.
I'm guessing you're not interested in working in the town of Southwick, if you're looking for...
Not doing, not doing utility construction, no, not in the town of Southwick. We do have a corporate repair for the town and some other things, but not anything that would be, you know, water utility specific at this point.
All right. Yeah, I just, it just, you know how it gets with the ethics? I just wanted to make sure there was going to be no conflict of interest.
Yeah, no, I don't think, not with what we do on a regular basis for the town, and what we do outside of the town is a little bit different.
Yeah. Okay. Now, you, you, how long have you been doing construction on water systems?
Myself, for five years, I've owned the company. And before that, I worked on water systems, you know, shipboard piping, that kind of thing, reverse osmosis, all different types of piping systems, water quality, water testing, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, it sounds like that, that would be good for the, good to have some insight on the Commission, so, yeah, I like your, I like your background, I think it would be good. I just want to be sure, just want to be clear that you understood that there was going to be no water, water line construction.
Yeah, no, and that's kind of one of the things I've tried to separate myself from what we do, you know, on the town government side of things than the actual work that we perform for the town, you know, any decision, that kind of stuff, I try to stay out of it. And we simply work as a contractor for the town for what we do.
Okay, and, and my last question is, are you, would you be interested in doing this for more than just the five or six months that you'll be appointed, or?
Yeah, I'd like to go for another term, and then hopefully, you know, do well and keep going on with the Commission, and get some things done in town that need to be done, and move forward through the next, you know, whatever time it might be. I've lived here for 30 years, and I plan on staying here for quite a bit longer, too, so.
Good, good. You may change your mind on that. I've been informing all the, all the candidates of the pay, it's eight cents an hour before taxes.
Oh, that's better than what the fire department was paying me.
Well, that, you take up with the, with the new chief. All right, thank you.
Joseph?
You're okay with the, apparently, one meeting a month schedule?
Who, me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Fox?
I'm going to be repetitive, Mr. Chairman, I know all three candidates, you know, I've known John for several months now very well, but I think we've got three good candidates.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, it's the, it is a joint appointment, so this is, does this follow the same rules like with the planning board appointment there, Carl? It's a nominations?
Yep, someone should make a nomination for somebody and see how you go through that process, and then at some point, you'll be doing a roll call vote, which is, you know, usually you wouldn't do that for every single vote in, that you take at your meetings, but under this new Zoom platform, as a, as a conference call approach, under the open meeting law changes because of COVID-19, all your votes are roll call votes, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, are you okay with moving forward this evening on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Joseph?
Yep.
Okay, floor is open for nominations.
Well, I'll start it, you know, I'd like to nominate John Kane, nothing against the other two candidates, but I think his resume is something that would be of tremendous benefit to the Water Commissioners and to the town of Southwick. We got some serious issues, and this pandemic hasn't helped things, and I think he'd be the right, right person at the right time. So I nominate John Kane.
Any others?
I'd like to hear what David would want, because he's the one that's really got to work with him. I mean, it's his board, right? More or less, you're the one that's here, I mean, last thing I want is to put someone on there that you don't want, you don't want to work with.
I guess I'm, tonight, I'm the emperor of the, of the Water Commission. No, I think all three candidates are good. I think, you know, if I had, if I had to make my nomination, I think I would have gone with John Kane as well, so I'm glad that Russ took the bullet for me and nominated him, so I guess I could second him. You know, I think everybody's, everybody's very, very qualified, you know, and I like, I like them all, I like all their resumes, I like all their background, but you can only pick one. So this week, we can pick another one, maybe next week.
Appears that way, doesn't it? Anyways.
Well, hopefully not, right? And I want to, I was going to put forth another nomination just for the purpose of discussion, but seeing as the motion was seconded already, that the ship has sailed, because I wanted to thank Butch for coming out. I know I had spoken to Butch about it when it first happened, so I encouraged him to apply, so I did want to put that forth and to let everybody know that. But we do have a nomination and a second, so I think we have to proceed to a vote on this appointment. And so it is a roll call vote, and so the motion is for John Kane, and David, how do you, if you could just vote first, since it's...
David Meswore, aye.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
So it is voted, so it is done. Condolences or congratulations, Mr. Kane?
I don't know, hopefully a little bit of both.
I think it's, it's an important board. I mean, they've got a lot of stuff in front of them right now, you know, they're, they've got a lot of projects that they want to work on, they've got a, you know, once, once you're sworn in, I think we want to schedule another, I know I'll certainly want to attend another Water Commissioner meeting, and maybe even some, the other selectmen, so it would be a joint meeting to discuss, you know, there's a... So it would be a joint meeting to discuss, you know, there's a a water connection ban that's been put forth that, you know, probably needs to be looked at as to how we're going to find our way out of that, because that could be economically impactful to the town and the tax base. And we want to try to figure a way forward for that. So.
Ready to do whatever, whatever we need to do and get involved and, you know, take care of some of these problems we have.
Great. Excellent. Thank you very much. And Mr. Free, I wanted to thank you very much, you know, and, you know, it's not we've been struggling over the years to get people to come out for boards and commissions, so I'm hoping that though this one didn't come out the way you wanted to, that we, if some other opportunity does present itself, that we can reach out to you or you can reach out to us to find other ways to serve this community. Because there certainly are opportunities and we certainly want to get more and more people involved in, in in the town and how they can help their town. And I do appreciate, and I'm sure everyone else here appreciates you coming out and putting yourself forward for this, for this very important role. And there's other important roles that we need to fill and will need to fill in the future.
Yeah, you're certainly welcome. Thanks for the opportunity and I'm sure that John's going to do just fine for you guys.
Excellent.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You as well.
Thank you.
Okay, let me get back to my agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fox?
Mr. Kane does know he needs to get sworn in and to see the town clerk and all that.
I'll contact you, Mr. Kane, sometime tomorrow morning after I do an appointment and send it over. Then you'll have to call them to make an appointment.
Okay, I am out of town for the week, but I can either come back early Friday or
Well, what's your first availability?
Most likely Friday afternoon or Monday morning. I can do it.
Okay.
Have you guys, has the Water Commissioners posted for their next meeting yet?
I can answer that. No, there is no set meeting right now. So John, there's no immediate rush this week anyways.
Okay.
I'll touch base with Ed later on this week and Ed Johnson, he's the chairman of the board. I can talk to him about when he wants to have the next meeting. We should probably plan on meeting, meeting pretty soon, so I'll check his schedule and we'll be in touch by email or phone.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll email you and then when it's convenient for you, you can call and make an appointment.
Okay, great. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, am I all set? Do you guys need me or anything else?
Not unless you want to watch the wheels of government turn.
I've seen those turn too much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
No problem. Congratulations.
Thank you, John.
Have a good one. Bye.
Okay, so the, is the conservation restriction still on hold?
Yeah, it has not come to us yet, Mr. Chairman.
Carl, remind me to speak to you tomorrow on related issue. Waiting on the hearing date, Cable Advisory, is there an update on the Cable Advisory Committee?
I did after our last meeting. The board had asked me to reach out to Bob Horacek to verify that he was interested in being on that ad hoc board. He is. And then I believe he put the word out to some of the previous members and other people did also, and this is, you know, Cindy's posted this several times to try to get members. And I believe we have another individual who was on it before and who used to be on the Community Preservation Committee is Susan Fox. So Cindy's got two names in her file right now and we are persevering to seek at least a third so that we can have a three-member board.
I will send you one other name, somebody that reached out to me regarding the proposed cell tower over by Lex that potentially might be interested to be on that. We'll see how that goes. High-speed internet has not met, spring, Southwood Police Lieutenant Recruitment, that, those dominoes are coming into play. And then we need to have, what's this short greetings? Oh, that's the Jim Putnam for the 250th meeting, 250th celebration.
Yep.
Is he spearheading that? He's just going to tell us where to show up and when?
I believe he's waiting to hear from you.
Okay.
To do it in town.
Do you know what he's thinking here?
I don't know the details, but I can reach out to Jim tomorrow and see how he would like to do that. Maybe just the chairman would be speaking on our behalf. But I will reach out to Mr. Putnam.
I think all three of us should send our regards across the pond. I think it's a great idea.
Foxy, foxy, foxy.
I was just trying to keep the bus going.
I see what you did there.
Right in the winter.
Whatever, just tell us where to be and when and we'll make it happen. I mean, he wants to do it somewhere. I think he said that, you know, iconic New England, so there's plenty of places around town to do that, and this is the perfect time of year to do it. Except when it's pouring rain, but while the leaves are on the trees and all colorful and everything, it might be a great time to knock it out.
And maybe we can even eat some fish and chips.
Oh, boy. Other old business in front of us tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a proposal on the fees scheduled for the liquor establishments, liquor licenses, entertainment, things like of that nature. We're going to, we're proposing a 30% for establishments that weren't able to open whatsoever. 20% for those that had a limited opening. And 10% for people that were open but were still impacted by the pandemic. And I also reached out to the Chairman of the Board of Health and on their agenda this week, they'll be discussing if they would be interested in some sort of fee reduction for local businesses that require Board of Health permit.
So would you like to carry that until we have a package or do you want to do this by board? I mean, since they set their fees and we set our fees.
There was information emailed to you this afternoon along with four other action items?
Yes, there was.
I'm told that they would need to have this put to bed as soon as quick, as soon as possible, because they need to start this process in order to finish all the paperwork and filings before the end of the year.
See if I can't find that. Oh, boy, it's sideways.
Did we all get the email?
Yep.
Yep. It's on page 13. It's the one going the wrong way.
For example, I think Cindy, a 30% reduction, it would be, they'd still be paying a fee of $800, is that right?
840.
840, right.
I mean, I could mark who's open, who's not open at all, who's partially open and give it to you next week if you can through it that way.
But this way, at least all the town's costs would still be covered, because there is a considerable amount of work that goes into this. A lot of hours administrative assistance and our other secretarial staff, police, fire, et cetera.
I have no objection. I think it's a great idea and I think it's something we should do. Were there any facilities that closed as a result of COVID and have not reopened yet?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, off the top of my head, Hilltop, Franklin House.
And this Franklin House and then the one on the Connecticut line there.
State line?
State line.
State line's been open, no?
I mean, all the package stores have been open nonstop, so they're going to, I assume, pay full price. You know, I can and I can give you a
I guess that's what we need to kind of
Raft.
No pun intended.
The only thing I will say is I have talked to some of the convenience store people that do sell beer and wine, things like that. And they did say that their business has been impacted. And not in a good way. So I know, I know some people say the package stores are doing well, but I haven't talked to any of our three package store owners to find out if in fact that's true or if they saw an impact also. But I tend to think that even if they were open all the time, there was still the cost of, of disinfecting, cleaning, extra staff to do all that stuff, so.
So why doesn't the clerk meet up with Cindy this week and get this resolved and bring it back to us next week first thing?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I think it's, I think it was a good move to do it and I think let's just see it through and get it done.
We'll try to refine it.
Great.
We could spend hours going back and forth on numbers.
That, that's, that's the whole thing, Joe. You know, we can go back and forth and we were just trying to give something to, to the businesses that took it on the chin.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any other, any other old business, Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
And then I'm going to bounce back to the amended agenda items that I missed. Mr. Didi?
I'm off, sir.
Okay, so first item is approved finance committee reserve fund transfer for emergency tree cutting. Again, we got whacked last Tuesday, Wednesday and incurred some expense October 7th. So we're, there's a reserve fund transfer into the forestry line item for about $25,000. We're about negative 40 grand in all for that account. So sorry, we're requesting 25,000. We're negative 40 in the hole against the budget of 25, so.
Yeah, when's the, Randy, when's the chipper coming with the new engine in it?
I'm hoping we're going to get that within next week.
Okay, that's a key thing. That's, that's one of the reasons why we had all higher people, because we don't have a chipper right now and I know we're going to be getting this one back in a week and and probably within a week, we're going to have the research on the other one to go and order it.
Yep. But again, and, and so first of all, I appreciate the, the help from the police, fire, DPW again. Swiftly moving into action on this.
They did a good job out there, Randy, clearing things up massively and quickly.
Yep. So I need a motion to, for this reserve fund transfer of $25,000 to the forestry line item.
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Thank you. Approved COA Director Letter of Understanding Extension with Cindy Sullivan. We need a motion to move that forward. That was something that Carl and I were chartered to go back and get done, done.
Joe Didi will make the motion.
Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
The next item is approve accounting department part-time technician job description imposed vacancy. I believe we have a pending retirement that we need to backfill potentially. And so we have a job description, I believe it was in your either in your folder or it's in your email.
Right, Carol's leaving next month, so we we need to backfill this position for that office.
So I just, at this point there, we just need to approve the job description into post.
You guys read it? You go with it?
Do you want to carry it? We just got it. I just assumed carry it till the next meeting if it's okay with everybody. Carl, is that all right to wait one meeting?
Yeah, I mean, she's going to be gone in 30 days, I guess, so, because it just finished going through Labor Council.
Russ?
The only thing I had to say, Mr. Chairman, I think we should look into some sort of bylaw change where people aren't allowed to retire twice. Once they come back, they have to stay till they go down to Seabird's pasture, you know, so.
I will let her know that, Russell.
You got to get her another cake?
No.
Really?
Well, that's the thing with the retirements and COVID, there's no cake.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
I spoke to her last week too, when I was in and I said, you know, you can't, to your point, Russ, that I didn't think you were allowed to retire twice. I thought you only go out the second time is feet first. You put it more politely than I did.
Yeah, and then she wants to make sure we're in good shape. That's why she worked with Laura and then Fred's office put it to form, so it's met all the criteria you usually do. And we just have to start the recruitment process. We can't do that till it's approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be comfortable making the motion to accept it if it's gone through Labor Council.
Well, if she's approved it, then Carol, I'll second that.
There you go. Motion's made and seconded. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Great. And now I've totally lost my mind here. Vote to approve reversal of transfer of liquor license from 141 Associates back to Skidery, Inc. Did we not vote on that last week when we had our deal? Is that the problem?
This actually should have been done a while back when you got the letter. So all I would need is a motion to, to go back to Skidery, Inc. Before they can look into changing the management of Skidery.
Oh, I see. We did the other thing first.
Right. So Joe Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Is there a new business, Carl?
No, I'm all set.
I just have one. Is Randy still here? I think, and the police chief left.
Yeah.
This, this is the second time this has happened. I know all three of us were kind of involved in it on Saturday. But the rail trail was blocked after this storm with trees down and debris. And I don't think anybody had really noticed it too much or reported it until Saturday. And we probably need to add to our process. Either, either the police department should check it out or someone should check it out from the town. It, we shouldn't be relying on, you know, a volunteer park and rec commission to run up and down their rail trail after a storm to to tell us that there's trees down or not down or get reported or after someone gets hurt or something like that. So I just want to put that on, on a topic to discuss amongst public safety to make sure that we're doing that, because it is, you know, it's a large linear park and, you know, it, it's a couple miles long. And we had a problem out there Saturday at two different points where there was trees across it, some good sized ones. They did bring in some equipment, DPW. Got called out on Saturday and they were nice enough to come out. We also had, I think it was Tynick or, it was Tynick, right? Tynick came out as well to help out, so great that it got opened up fairly quickly on Saturday, but from something that happened on Wednesday, we as a town should have been more on top of it. So, and this is, the same thing happened with the other storm that we had that we had the problems up and down the rail trail. So I want to try to put that process in place where we at least check it.
Yeah, that's what I had for new business, because, so your police department makes a phone call to a voicemail at the parking wreck on a Saturday morning, which they're supposed to do, I get, but then it gets nowhere. And I don't, I don't necessarily think these trees were down right after the storm. I think this had happened, wind, whatever, since the storm. And then all of a sudden, it was an issue Saturday morning. And you're right, DPW is great, but they have lives. They're not just sitting by the phone waiting. And then, like you said, Doug, me and you were tracking down Randy and Chris, and we got it done, but especially on the weekends, we got to come up with a formula that works where everyone is just working together. And it worked, but there's got to be a simpler way.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't know that this is from the Wednesday deal. I just naturally assumed it had I just naturally assumed it had to be from, at least related to it. And I don't know if, if anybody had, you know, just people were walking over it or walking around it and going, eh, tree down, they'll get to it. But I didn't know about it and, and, you know, then finally someone got hurt or, you know, potential someone could have got hurt out there and whatever. So we should probably have some kind of process for that. And like you said, the police, if police is calling park and rec, they should be calling either DPW or just call, you know, I don't know if they're, they're supposed to call in a contractor like they would for.
There was an issue that happened, issue that happened a couple of years ago, the same situation. And I thought Kara had kind of told me a protocol that they had. I'll ask her, you know, if they do have one, but they have somebody they call automatically, I believe, or did a couple of years back.
But again, you know, it's, so, so I don't know how it got back. I think it was one of the park and rec people called in to say that there was, you know, they got a phone call or something from someone. Anyway, I just want to put that out there as a topic for, to, to keep on our action list here to, to see it to conclusion.
I'll, I'll report back next week. I'll have an answer. I'll reach out to everybody and get it resolved.
Consider yourself assigned then.
Well, just easier.
Assigned yourself.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Other new business? Joe? Russell?
No, my only new business was the rail trail. You've already handled it.
And, and like I said, I appreciate everybody jumping in, Randy, Chris, Tynick, Joe, everybody that, that jumped up and down to try to get that done on Saturday. Appreciate it. Carl, any new business over there?
No, sir.
Okay, well then I would, I think we're done. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Joe D D will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
I thought you, we didn't want to go anywhere, Joe.
Just 20 things at once.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe D D, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Fantastic. We are adjourned.